Y'all ready?
Yeah.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to Fairfield County Council Meeting. Today's date is Monday, June 24th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. First, we'll have the approval of the agenda.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
It's moved and properly second. Any of those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? It's approved 7-0 for the agenda. Now down to our invocation, Councilmember Bell.
Edith Bray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we just come to say thank you for all your blessings. We thank you for this time that we've come together here tonight. Father, we pray that you might bless this council as they try to make decisions that's in the best interest of all the citizens of this county. But Father, as we do this, we pray, oh God, as always, that we might remember the least of these, as you told us in your word. So again, we thank you. We pray again, God, that our decisions might be good decisions and right for the citizens. Again, we thank you. Bless us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Now down to our approval of minutes, regular meeting dated June 10th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? It's approved 7-0, June 10th meeting, minutes. No public presentations. Now down to our first public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
We have three who wish to speak tonight. First, Mr. Clifton Hendricks, speaking on Mr. Hare.
Thank you for allowing me to address council. I come to say thank you to one of the servants of Fairfield County, and that's the veteran service officer. I spent eight years in the Navy. I'm 78 years old, and seven of those years were spent here in Fairfield County. The remaining eight were spent in the U.S. Navy. I basically went all over around the world, but during that time, something happened, and as a result, I had the occasion of visiting Mr. Hare in his office. The manner in which he serves, to me, was very passionate, someone that looks at the person, and don't just look, but he just listens. And during that listening process, he learned so much, and based on his experience, he can really help that veteran. I know he helped me a lot, but I was so impressed that I've taken a number of Air Force people, a number of Marines, and a number of Army personnel, and found a Coast Guard person yet. But Fairfield is gonna miss this man, and I just came to say, "Thank you. Job well done."
Thank you. Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on Providence.
Good evening, Chairman Robertson. I'm Jackie Workman, District 4. I just want to say, concerning Providence, I heard about all the great things about Providence, what they're supposed to be doing, providing. Well, let me tell you, the day before Easter of 2019, my granddaughter was taken to Providence here in Winsboro, not in Columbia. And believe it or not, they sent her back home, and immediately was not running blood work or anything. And she's 16 years old, and on Sunday, Easter Sunday, my grandbaby couldn't hold her head up. She couldn't even walk. And when she got to Columbia, they immediately put her in ICU and was not looking for her to live. Now, mind you know, she just left Winsboro. Now, we now closed down the hospital for something better, not for something worse, so we should be doing better, not for a show. But I almost lost my grandbaby. She could not walk. She didn't even know anything. Her dad had to lift her up, and the ambulance representative lifted her up, and they was concerned about her when she got to the hospital. What happened? They didn't check her in Providence and Winsboro? What did they do? Gave her something for constipation, and it was her blood. Her sugar was low. She's a diabetic now. But she almost lost her life in ICU. That's not good, council. I'm talking about my grandbaby, because see, if somebody had my grandbaby, you could say whatever you wanted to say. Yes, I'm a minister, I'm a chaplain, but I tell you, I would have organized a march against Fairfield County Council. I'm not gonna let you hurt my family. I'm not gonna do that. And it's a sad day. Now, I know there have been other complaints. We should be doing better, better doctors. We should pay more attention to individuals once they come in, if they're sick. My baby was sick. You know if somebody can't hold their head up and say their name, they sick. That's fine.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on 724, 725, and 726 ordinances.
Randy Bright, District 1, Fairfield. As you know, in the general concept, I'm in full support of the ordinances for fees that are going to impact hospitality tax and tourism. However, I have not heard a concrete plan, how we're going to execute. What are we gonna do with this money? For tourism, what are we gonna do? We're gonna put billboards up? We're going to spruce up the county? What is our specific plan? How are we gonna spend the money? It's interesting, I was reading another city's plan, and for example, their plan for one of their fees, well, hospitality tax, was to eliminate blight at a rate of X amount of homes a year, and the total amount, or buildings, was 1,000. And that included buildings to be repurposed, remodeled, demolished, sold to somebody else who then could repurpose it, if that be the case. So that was a very specific plan. How many buildings are we going to address? How are we going to market tourism? How are we gonna build tourism? I'm not an expert on either of these answers, but there's a lot of experts out there, there's a lot of towns that have done this, and communities and counties, and I think it's great that we're looking to take money and invest it in all of our future. But it's just like if you're gonna drive to Chicago, and you just don't say, "Well, I'm going north." You gotta have a plan. You gotta have a map. Fortunately, when you're driving, you have a GPS, but there's no GPSs that come with ameliorating blight or addressing tourism marketing. So let's develop our own GPS, and let's execute a plan, so we know where we are, where we're going, and we understand what we've got to do, and we can hold people accountable. Without a plan, you can't hold people accountable to get the job done. So looking forward to hearing some great plans on those two aspects. And then on the business registration piece, I know there was some discussion, you know, some businesses may not qualify. I don't know if, like, someone rents their house out once a year, does that qualify as a business? I think we need to be very specific on what does and what not qualify, because when we talked about this before, what we heard was there was not complete specificity on some of these day businesses or lemonade stands that would not be charged. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Segment 1.
All right. Now down to our public hearing. First item up is an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD1 Rural Residential District to I-1 Industrial District of 116.22 acres owned by Fairfield County, applicant tax map number Property is located at Valencia Road and Ridgeway, South Carolina 29130. Do I have a motion?
No move.
I'm sorry. Let's back up. This is public hearing. Before we get into the public hearing, I'm gonna ask Mr. Taylor just to give us a brief description.
Yes, well, this particular piece of property is part of the larger mega site that we've been working with, with the state. We have roughly 1,200 acres under control right now. The state's looking to eventually go to 1,500 to 2,000 acres, but this was a portion that should have been rezoned earlier, and it was just left out, the tax map number, and so we're going back and rectifying that by adding this back in, so it's zoned as the other parcels within the mega site.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open this public hearing up at 6:10. Ms. Davis, who haven't one to speak?
No one signed to speak.
All right. No one signed to speak. I'll close it at 6:11. Now down to Item B, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD1 Rural Resource District to I-1 Industrial District of 11.32 acres owned by Fairfield County, tax map number 087-02-01-009-000. Portion property is located at Old Airport Road, located in Winsboro, South Carolina. Again, before I open up, I ask Mr. Taylor to give a brief explanation, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Sometime back, we had examined what we were doing out at the chipper site and had determined that it would be more cost-effective to put an incinerator in, as opposed to continue the chipping. We thought that would save us money. We have purchased an incinerator. In order to meet DHEC guidelines, we had to purchase additional property as a buffer, as a setback for this machine to operate on, so it could handle the smoke and any other nuisance that was caused by the incinerator. So we have purchased that property. We have to rezone it now, so it is consistent in zoning with what our use is gonna be. This has been before the Planning Commission. They did not make a final recommendation in moving it forward to council. There were some concerns. We did have another public hearing, Mr. Calder and myself, on Thursday, June 20th. Letters were issued prior to that to all the surrounding homeowners. I think 38 letters went out, if I'm not mistaken. We went out there, and we sit from 6:00 to 7:00 last Thursday, in case anybody wanted to come see the site, we would give a full tour of it and show them the machine that's sitting there. The machine itself relatively small, it's smaller than the bed of a tractor-trailer truck, in fact. But again, we had that open to the public, and no one chose to come at that time. But that's what we're looking to do, is rezone this property so it can be used as an incinerator site.
I'll go ahead and open this public hearing up at 6:12. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
We have four who wish to speak. First, Ms. Shirley Sebels.
It's 3 minutes, I'm gonna have to talk really fast. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the Fairfield County Council, Mr. Taylor. My name is Shirley Davis Sebels, and I'm here representing the Airport Road community. Some of our members are here in the audience. We're here tonight because of letters we've been receiving about this rezoning have stated that these meetings were public hearings. We did not understand that public hearings meant that you were revoting on rezoning our community. We only learned Friday that there had been a first and second reading on this matter. We're here tonight as homeowners, property owners, and residents of the first one-half mile of Airport Road that branches off 321 North. This is the area that you have been asked to rezone from a residential zone to an industrial zone in order to place an air incinerator. It will be used to burn the wood debris that is located currently on the Airport Road site. It will also burn all future wood debris that will come unto that site. It is our understanding that you have been shown a presentation or video from YouTube that was to give you enough firsthand information and understanding of the process of this burning of wood debris that would cause our homes to the environment, and most importantly, to the health of our community. I have seen the same video that you have seen, and I am so afraid for our community. I have seen the same video, and I feel that our health is at risk. Within the small radius of one-half mile of where you plan to place that burner, we have a homeowner on oxygen. We have two children with eczema. We have a homeowner with bronchitis. We have another with asthma, and we also have a homeowner that has been diagnosed with lung cancer. We've also had several, we also have several homebound homeowners, a 47-year-old stroke victim, three elderly coronary disease patients, two spinal disease patients, and an Army veteran with Parkinson's. These illnesses are just the ones that we know about. Now, you want to subject them to a, quote, "reasonable amount of smoke inhalation." Royal Hills was built in 1971, and the majority of us have raked, scraped, begged, borrowed, and borrowed again, and some of them perhaps to have our names on the deeds of our homes. Now, after all these years of having been subjected to the noises of the grinders for months and the smell of the tar-like chemical used during the grinding, we're told that you, the members of the Fairfield County Council, want to subject us to the smoke from burning wood. I can hear your thoughts. You're saying, "Mrs. Sebels, they can control the smoke that escapes the incinerator." Really? Can you really control smoke after it's been released? Burning releases ashes and hot cinders into the atmosphere. Even on YouTube, you can see that something's being released. You can say to those that didn't grow up in the 1960s, using potbelly stoves to cook our food and to heat our homes, that...
Mr. Chairman, you want to finish reading it?
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. You can say to those of us that didn't grow up in 1960s using potbelly stoves to cook our food and to heat our homes, that circulating air in the incinerator will control the smoke. Believe me, lots of us that have life experiences, we say otherwise. Ash settles, and it settles on where it may, on porches, vents, shingles, flowers, cars and trucks, children's toys, and lungs. In fact, there's a small playground next to where you want to put this incinerator. My other concern is, have you personally inspected the green incinerator the county has already purchased? If not, I have some pictures on my phone, and later, if you would like to see. The device is very similar to the size of a small F-150 foot pickup. I'm 5'9" in sneakers, and the depth and the height does not allow much room for a significant amount of wood. I guess I need a STEM student from the middle school or the high school to tell me how long it would take for a five-foot tree trunk to burn in that small incinerator. The video that you were shown has a buncher placing 15- to 20-foot logs into a large orange container. Why wasn't there a site, why isn't there a site in a surrounding county where you could have gone to inspect their operation and inquire how it was affecting their citizens? Why indeed? Mr. Chairman and council, there's a mountain of wood debris across the street from our homes. How long is it going to take to put a dent in this current mountain? There's also dirt mixed into that pile from the many, many contractors that come and bring their loads to the site. How and why are we allowing Fairfield County to be the free dumping ground from every surrounding and maybe nearby county? Why are we the dumping ground? All we are asking today is that you send your project managers back to the drawing board and demand they find a better way, a cleaner way, and a more godly way to project, to wait for that project, not just for us, but for those that are currently living on Airport Road, but the, yet, for those that are yet to come to live in Fairfield County. Thank you much for the extra time. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give you the signature of those that have signed our petition. 64 names. Thank you very much. And only 38 letters went out, but we have 64 names of residents. Thank you again.
Mr. John Sebels.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, Mr. Taylor. Yes, and I understand before you, and I hope I feel the same way after I leave, but I'm here probably in a little different aspect of this thing. It was kind of interesting when I heard being able to control the smoke. Well, I'm Director of Public Safety, and we fight many fires, and I hadn't seen anybody control smoke yet. So maybe it's something new, and maybe we can use that at the fire department up there, if y'all want to show us how to do that. But being sincere about this, it's right there within the neighborhood, it's right there. When we first got told about the chipping site, well, when the recycling station come, we didn't have many objections to that. I don't think it was many people running around asking, "Put it in my yard." I don't think, you know, you asked for it to be in your neighborhood, near your house. Well, when the chipping station come, I was assured by one of the previous chairman of council that, "Don't, you don't have to worry about nothing, it's okay, I promise you, you won't have no effects, it won't be any smell, it won't be any noise." Well, that didn't pan out to be true, because my neighbors, and all my neighbors... Would y'all stand, please? And all my neighbors, they experienced being woke up early in the morning by the chipping, and the chipping is much more regular now than before. Now, on my way home on one particular occasion, when I got almost home, there was smoke all across the road. When I stopped to investigate, they had been chipping, and it was on fire. So I dialed dispatch and asked them to send fire units up to put it out. Well, when I looked at the little incinerator, it's open, just, you know, whenever they burn, they're gonna burn on the ground or on concrete, it's not a bottom in it. So, and then it's got blowers in it. So I'm just concerned to know, how you gonna control that smoke with an open heater? Even in your house, if you put a fireplace in, now, modern times, you got to insert, but it still draws up the chimney, but if you got that box sitting there that's open, then how you gonna control the smoke? I'm very curious. And I don't think, you know, there's plenty of land in Fairfield County, and I'm sure you guys own a bunch of land, you know, I don't see anybody saying, "Bring it to my house, bring it to my neighborhood," you know, but we'll be in single out, apparently, because, you know, we right there. And you want to rezone this to industrial, we got a neighborhood. We got good people in our neighborhood. And now, if you make it industrial, now, anything can come on the other side of the road. And I'm not talking about a distance away, I'm talking about on the other side of the road. And the folks on the front side, right there, that is right directly in front of, I know they have to be affected even more so than we do. We one house back. But now, where this thing probably gonna be, it's gonna be more up on the up end that's across from my house. And, you know, I don't know about everybody else, but I don't want to wake up every morning smelling fire, smelling smoke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. RW Davis.
Thank you, Madam Clark, member of the council, Mr. Administrator, to the public. The last time I spoke to you, councilmembers, was concerning an ordinance in reference to chipping. Council was about to pass an ordinance for a company to come in without any knowledge whatsoever of the effect or the results of that. That was on 321 North, just north of Airport Road, about a mile. That did not take place, thankfully, because the company got into financial trouble. Some folk in the White Oak area took it upon themselves to travel to other areas to find out exactly what this chipping mill, the chipping organization was about. None of council, to my knowledge, did that. Council did not send a representative to investigate such. Have you done that in this aspect of it? Is there one in the region that we can go see and find out exactly what happens? Talk to the people in the area, find out the results of it? Are there any other options? Did we explore any other options to get rid of the wood products? These are type things you've got to be extremely, extremely careful of when you place something in a neighborhood, in an area. I was a member of the council back in 1990, when we established the ordinances of Fairfield County. I'm for ordinances. I think it's a controlling mechanism. I think it's good for the public. We would be in a tough situation from that point to this one, had we not had ordinance. Thank goodness we've got some controls in place. But my thing is, have we done due diligence to find out if we have any other options? Do we have any other options? Did we see, did you see, in another county, the same type of operations? Let's investigate this. I'm not saying to do it or not to do it. What I'm saying is, make sure, make certain this would not have a negative impact on the people of that community. Once we do that, then we've done all we could. But until we do that, does anyone know whether one is in Richland or the neighboring counties? Have you seen one in operation? Has anyone talked to people of that neighborhood, where they are? That was done by some people out of the White Oak area, when it was talking about the chipping mill. So be very, very careful. Be very careful. Consider the neighborhood. Consider what you're asking the people of that neighborhood to accept and receive from Fairfield County. I'm not a resident, but I'm within three miles of it. I've got prop in on that street. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Tishonda Broom.
Good evening, chairmen, and Mr. Taylor. My name is Tishonda Broom. My mother, Annie Armstrong, lives right across the street from the chipping site where you all are. And putting an incinerator directly across her house, from her house, is not a good thing, because she, most of the time, she's there alone. And if a fire break out there, who's gonna be able to make sure that she's okay if she lives there alone? Like Ms. Sebels and Mr. Sebels said, there's a lot of elderly, and there's a lot of sick people in that neighborhood. And just with the chipping site alone, every day that you ride down that street, is chipped, is chipped wood debris all in that neighborhood. Is, they don't control the bark that comes when people load their vehicles, is chipped wood everywhere, is paper everywhere. And my mom, like I said, lived directly across the street from her, from this site. And to have constantly, when she cut grass, when we had the grass cut, is bark all over in her yard, coming from off other people's vehicles, that's not a good thing. And also, the taxes. She's on a fixed income. What's gonna happen when it's rezoned and the taxes go up? Who's gonna help them pay, the ones that's in that area that's on fixed income, pay for their taxes? Because that is gonna happen. The taxes will go up. So, I mean, I'm just wanting y'all to take this into consideration, that the people in that neighborhood, my mom, and a lot of the residents, have worked really hard, really, really hard, to maintain their property. And not only that, the property value is gonna go down. It's not gonna go up, it's gonna go down. Okay? So y'all need to take all that into consideration, that maybe one day, God forbid, if something happened to her, and we have to move into her house, who's gonna want to buy, or who's gonna, if we have to put it up for sale, who's gonna want to buy a home directly across from a wood chipping place and an incinerator? That's not good. Okay? So I really want y'all to take that into consideration. One, taxes. These people own fixed income. And then the pollution of the area, like Mr. Sebels and Ms. Sebels said, there's no way y'all gonna keep smoke contained in one area. It is no way. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else signed to speak?
All right. Ms. Taylor, being that we had a few councilmembers that were absent at the last meeting, would you be able to have Mr. Calder come up and elaborate to address some of the issues that was during the public comment session?
Certainly, Brad. Could you come up?
I don't know where to start. I didn't make a list. But, you know, on a personal note, you know, I probably live half a mile from the site myself, you know, as the crow flies through the woods there, so... You know, from a personal level, you know, if I wasn't confident of the results of the machine, you know, certainly wouldn't be something that I would be pushing myself, you know? But the whole point of the process, and I think it gets lost, and we've done, I mean, we've gone on three years in this project, from start to finish, from research, is that it is a far cleaner process than the chipping now. You have carcinogens that are released every time you chip. You have a whole lot more... confident, uh, of the results of the machine, you know, certainly wouldn't be something that I would be pushing myself, you know? Um, but, but the whole point of the process, and I think it gets lost, and we've done, I mean, we've going on three years in this project from start to finish from research, uh, is that it is a far cleaner process than the chipping now. Um, you have carcinogens that are released every time you chip. Um, you have a whole lot more pollutants in the air with the grinding. Um, you have far less de-hack restrictions and regulations, you know, uh, with the grinding than you do with an incinerators. Just for example, um, the incinerator, when it releases smoke, you have to be able to see 90% of what's on the other side. Uh, it's called opacity, and it's a 10% limit. Um, with the, with the grinding, it's 60%. So it, it's far, you can have far more pollution, far more dust acceptable, you know, through the wood grinding. And, and like y'all said, um, you know, it's dust everywhere. It's wood everywhere. Yeah. It's wood everywhere. Um, so this will be, and it, and it's right beside the road. You know, we're gonna have to be 500 feet back from where we are right now and, which is further setback. Um, and then you talk about the fire risk. Well, the fire risk is far greater with storing all that much up there, you know, than a, an incinerator in a concrete box. Um, it has an air curtain which blows over the top of the box there and, which calls it a fire box incinerator, uh, was why it's called that. But it, it, it keeps, it limits the particulate matter, what it's called, and the carbon and the, uh, pollutants from coming out. You know, that's why there's less smoke. Um, there's one in Richland County. Uh, it, it's probably four or five times the size of ours. Um, and, you know, they get very few complaints from de-hack. Um, all somebody's gotta do is call de-hack, and they're right there. I mean, the guy told me down there, he said, you know, believe me, if there's smoking, de-hack's gonna show up 'cause somebody's gonna call. So, you know, and then they come out and they measure how much smoke you have and what you're doing. Um, it is an extremely tedious process. Not only do you have to be, uh, compliant with de-hack, air regula, air pollution, air regulation department, there is a solid waste department also, um, that you have to be in compliance with them. There is debris management plans, ash management plans, stormwater management plans. I mean, it, the list goes on and on. So this is not something that was done with, you know, little consideration at all. This has been years of planning, lots of engineering work, and, you know, and it is the best alternative that we could find. I mean, we have searched, booked it what everybody else does. There are several, um, air incinerators in the lower state, in Charleston area, Shaw Air Force Base. Uh, they're really big in Florida, a lot throughout the southeast because it helps people manage storm debris. Um, so, you know, I, I'm not a scientist. I'm not a biologist, so I can't stand up here and talk about all the chemicals that, you know, is, are involved in it. Uh, but I can tell you that it will be a much safer and cleaner process for everybody involved. And I have, and I've spoke with lots of de-hack people about it too. And they're all, you know, they're all in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Yep.
Mr. Carter, when, when we, when we say smoke, how much amount of smoke are we referring to? Like a house being on fire, a dumpster being on fire?
Well, I mean, you gotta imagine, I mean, the box itself is probably, you know, from this point to that point down there in front of Mr. Taylor. And it, and it's probably eight feet tall, I guess. And it supposedly, it, it's supposed to burn two to four tons per hour. Um, and so it, the, the smoke will be limited at the beginning and at the end when you get it going. But it burns so hot, if you've ever seen a real hot fire, there's not much smoke. Um, because it, the more it heats, the less pollutants come out. So that's the whole idea behind it.
Have you seen one actually in use? Have you been to visit and seen one actually in use?
Yeah.
Mr. Carter, the one in Richland County, is it in the middle of a residential community?
Um, they're probably within three tenths of a mile, I would say. It's right there off West Inger Road.
How many houses you would think was on that road?
Uh, I don't know. I just went straight to the place. I mean, there's one, uh, the guy, well, just from what the guy told me, um, there's probably, I don't know, another three tenths to the house that's closest, but across 321 there's a neighborhood.
In your professional opinion, you think this is the best location in the county for this?
For, we, we looked everywhere, and you have to have a certain amount of control or care. You have to control, uh, the land that it sits on. You have to own it. Um, and for the way that the wind blows and for the area, you have to have to disperse the, the matter that does come out, you know, it, this was the only place that we have, that Fairfield County owns. Or we didn't even own the place where it ended up going, so.
So if the county, council was interested in buying some property around from interresidential area, would that be a better fit?
Uh, you'd have to go through the permitting process all over again. And, and so I really, I hate to say yeah or no for sure. For, from, for our location, for what we do, it's centrally located. Um, and we bring debris there from all recycling sites all over the county. So if we were to move it or have to find somewhere else, you know, it would be hard for us logistically to, you know, be able to work around that. I mean, we got one person who all he does is get limbs and take them there. So.
But it could be done.
If it could get permitted, you know. But, well, I guess what I'm saying is the land has to be shaped a certain way. So you just can't put them anywhere.
Is this the total amount, the 10 acres, or are you just adding to another acreage that we have already?
It's added on to what we have. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay. Don't know if you can answer this or not because someone did reference to taxes. How does this site being there affect the, uh, towards taxes? I don't know if you can or if.
Ms. Bertha, I'll, I'll answer that one for you. It will not cause taxes to go up. Taxes do not necessarily follow zoning. Uh, and I am hoping, uh, it was also mentioned that it would hurt the property values. I'm hoping in cleaning up what we're doing with the chipper site, which is problematic. I'm hoping it will be cleaner, uh, and more or less visible since it's being pushed back and will help, help not hurt property values, but improve property values. But I, this will not, I cannot imagine this hurt, uh, raising taxes.
And another thing too about the piece of property that it will be on, hopefully, um, is it's landlocked. So Warehouser, Warehouser, used to be Plum Creek, owns a huge track on the other side there. That's just a timber farm. Uh, it's leased for hunting right now. So then it's, there's really no access much to get to it. And, you know, you can look on a tax map and see that. It's pretty landlocked itself. So, you know, as far as a potential, you know, it's really not.
Future, there would be, uh, no potential future development for other.
I, nobody would want a landlocked piece of land right there. That's what I'm, if we own the front and the Plum Creek owns the other side, you know, I can't say that for sure, but it doesn't seem like a prime piece of real estate.
Um, I think about two weeks ago, um, I, I went up to the site and thank you, Mr. Carter, for taking me through all the information and letting me see the piece of equipment. And one of the things I did was ask Mr. Taylor to have a meeting at the site, and, and you did that. So I wanna thank you, Mr. Taylor, for doing that. But one of the things that, um, Mr. Davis brought up, and, um, and Mr. Taylor, I guess this question is to you. Could we get a delegation of council to go look at, um, the one in Richland County since it's just right down the road so we can make sure that we understand all the implications of this piece of equipment? So as we vote, we'll be more inclined to know what we're voting for.
Certainly, Councilman Bell. I think that would probably be a good thing to do. So you are fully aware of what you're voting on.
Yes. Okay. Any further questions before I close the public hearing? Thank you, Ms. Carter. No further questions. I'll close this public hearing at 6:39. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Ms. Davis, if you could.
Third and final reading, ordinance number 722, and ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD1 Rural Residential District to I-1 Industrial District of 116.22 acres owned by Fairfield County applicant, tax map number 1480000015000. Property is located at Valencia Road, Ridgeway, South Carolina, 29130.
Mr. Chair.
Motion, uh, yes, sir.
I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Bell and seconded by Mr. Douglas. Or if I could, just get a brief discussion from our, uh, our attorney, if that's okay before we vote.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, Mr. Chairman, this would be the parcel that there's, county already owns a portion of the mega site. So this is just changing, um, the classification for this, um, in order to have it be properly, uh, zoned at this point in time.
Thank you. Any further questions, discussions from council? All those in favor? Any opposed? Third and final reading for ordinance 722 is approved. Now down to item B, third and final reading ordinance number 723. Ms. Davis.
An ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD Rural Resource District to I-1 Industrial District of 11.32 acres owned by Fairfield County applicant, tax map number 0870201009000. Portion property is located at Old Airport Road, Windsboro, South Carolina, 29180.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bell.
Um, I, I move that we table this until said time, that a delegation from council and also some citizens, if they choose to go, that until we look at the, um, operation of the one that's in Richland County.
Second, Mr. Chair.
All those, uh, before I ask all those, when would you like to table it? For the next meeting?
Until said time. That's why I made sure I put that in there. My, if I have to put a date on it, I, I will.
I apologize. I didn't hear you say said time.
Until said time, that we are able to go, have council to go. And.
Any discussion in reference to Mr. Bell table?
If we may put a timer for the next council meeting, we should be sufficient, two weeks should be sufficient enough to take care of it.
I'm fine with that. I, I affirm that. I think we should at least put a timeframe on it.
Yes. And I can, yeah, and I can update the, um, um, the, the motion to table, um, to the next council meeting. Anyone, anyone have a date on that? I can, so I can just put the date on. Okay. That looked like that's, um, July 8th.
Well, motion's been made by Mr. Bell to table, uh, third and final reading for ordinance number 723 until July the 9th.
8th.
8th.
8th, I'm sorry. July the 8th. Uh, it's been motion by Mr. Bell and seconded by Mr. Trap. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Approve to table it until the 8th.
I beg to, if Mr. Sebel and his wife wants to go with him, they can go and look at and see how it works.
Now down to third and final reading, ordinance number 724. Ms. Davis.
An ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to amend and restate ordinance number 717, establishing a tourism development fee pursuant to section 61500 et cetera of the South Carolina Code of Laws.
I move.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion from council?
Chairman, what will the money that's collected, what will it be used for?
The state requires, they have a whole set of laws that we have to follow that it has to be used for. And it's activities that promote tourism, uh, promote people coming into the county. Uh, there's a wide range. Again, you can do it on billboards. You can do it on downtown redevelopment. You can do it on parks. There's a lot of different things this money can be spent on. But it's, again, geared toward making Fairfield County or our communities more attractive places to visit or doing advertising to bring people in.
Then it'll be used in rural areas.
It could be, yes, certainly. That would be, what I would anticipate, we probably need to get almost a year under our belt to see how much money we're gonna have come in. You can take this money and you can hold it for a period of two years. You can't just bank it indefinitely based on state law. But what you could do is, is, and I think the smart thing to do, bank it for a year to see if you're actually gonna have the amount of money that, uh, Department of Revenue anticipates as having come in, and then start budgeting that the prior year. So you have a, a track record on how much is gonna come in. And then that's up to council on, on what projects you wanna pursue, whether in the rural areas or, or anywhere else in the county.
I'll go ahead and defer to our county attorney to.
Mr. Trap, just if I could address your concern, we specifically included language in the ordinance, in this amendment, to address the areas because we hear tourism, and a lot of times you have folks that will say that there are areas of the county that are already tourist destinations and others, for example, rural, rural areas that are not. We specifically added language that provided a directive that council wants to also expend these funds on areas that are not now considered tourist destinations. So that way, there could be some development that in the future would allow for the, those areas to be considered tourist destinations.
County Administrator Taylor, and the, these funds, they are received how? Hotels?
The first one that we're talking about here is the accommodations tax. Uh, it's called a hospitality, or you have accommodations and you have hospitality tax. This one that we're talking about here is the, the charges that are on hotel rooms or lodging. And what happens is, uh, the person who has the business, they submit these funds to the county.
Any further questions? All right. If no further questions, I'll, uh, all those in favor? Any opposed? Approve 70, ordinance number 724. Now down to item D, third and final reading, ordinance number 725. Ms. Davis.
An ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to amend and restate ordinance number 718, authorizing Fairfield County to establish a local hospitality tax to apply to all establishments which sell prepared meals and beverages located in the unincorporated areas of Fairfield County pursuant to section 6 dash 1 dash 700 et cetera of the South Carolina Code of Laws.
I move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been motioned by Mr. Douglas and seconded by Mr. Bell. Uh, is any discussion?
Again, what, what will these funds be used for, Mr. Taylor?
Very similar to the accommodations tax that we just discussed. Uh, this is the hospitality tax, which is on prepared food. And again, uh, the restaurants, they would collect this food or this, this tax, they would, uh, send it to the county. I would also suggest that we wait for a year to see how much we're actually gonna get, and it can be used to promote tourism, parks and downtown redevelopment, or advertising those things such as billboards.
Mr. Morgan, you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, sir. Again, we, the changes that were made to this were to make sure that this tax is also collected in areas like, for example, in municipalities. Currently, the only municipality that collects this tax would be Ridgeway. Uh, the town of Windsboro has not allowed or passed any, uh, legislation for this tax be collected. So as it is written currently, the county could collect a certain amount, up to one and a half percent of the overall 3%. Um, and there's a possibility that the town can work with the county and vice versa, where they could, uh, take those revenues, the one and a half percent that they're entitled to, and, and basically attribute that to the county so the county could get all 3% in the incorporated area.
Thank you.
I can understand, uh, Mr. Taylor's suggestion of waiting at least a year and more because, uh, given on the amount of hotels or eating establishments, um, businesses that we do have in the county, it would take some time, even though it sounds like, uh, it would be a large amount of money right at first, but it will not be. It would take some time to, uh, accumulate in order to even begin to budget and out to doing projects. So I thank him for making that suggestion.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? Approve 70, ordinance number 725. Now down to item E, third and final reading, ordinance number 726. Ms. Davis.
An ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to amend and restate ordinance number 719, authorizing Fairfield County to establish a county business registration program. registration program to regulate businesses located in the unincorporated area of the county of Fairfield pursuant to section 12 dash 37 dash 135 of the South Carolina Code of Laws.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Once again, Mr. Taylor, just brief, please.
Yes, this is a, a, a business permit, not a business license. Uh, it is regulated by the state, again, the maximum amount that we can charge, which is $15. Uh, we are doing that, this particular, uh, business permit fee at this time, in large part, um, because it, it is kind of the mechanism that ensures we will get the other two taxes. Because the other two taxes, the way state law was written, they're essentially, um, on the honor system, and if someone did not, uh, submit the taxes that they're collecting, we had little way without a business permit of enforcing that collection. We do think there'll be added benefit with this business permit, because, again, right now, we have no rational way of knowing all the businesses that are in the county, uh, inspecting them properly, whether it's through fire code or other, uh, building codes, and it also lets us know what's out there, so we can promote what's out there. Hopefully, when people wanna know what kinda businesses we have, we'll have a full list of them, and we can give them and promote those businesses.
All right. Ms. Ball.
Mr. Taylor, does, does this apply to, um, food trucks as well?
It would, yes.
So, in- incorporating this, um, is kinda telling me that we would have to employ more staff to enforce this, to make sure it's operated correctly?
We've had that discussion. Uh, I hope we don't get to that point. I hope we can use our existing staff. We have identified, uh, one person that's currently on staff that I think, uh, could help us implement this. Um, we are worried that in the initial stages, it may take more, and we may have to hire somebody temporary until we get it running smoothly.
Any further questions from council? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, third and final reading, ordinance number 726 is approved 70. Now down to item nine, board and commission minutes is received as information only. Does council have any questions in reference to Airport Commission? Now down to board and commission appointments. Item A, Airport Commission, uh, appointment for Bobby Mobley, District 4. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve 60 for Mr. Mobley, District 4. Now down to item B, Behavioral Health, Sean Jeremy McKnight, District 4. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Hey, Mr. Chair, not a discussion, but I don't know if they're present, but I want to thank them for volunteering. I do appreciate that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approve 60 for Mr. McKnight. Now, item C, Behavioral Health, um, if you guys remember, we have Ms. Janita Gaston, who's been appointed as a magistrate as of now, so, Mr. Brian Burns is, if approved, he'll be finishing out her term.
Mr. Chair, is there a move?
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approve 60, Mr. Brian Burns serve out Ms. Janita Gaston's term. No old business, no new business. Now down to our county administrator's report. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First tonight, we do have Mr. Joseph Bernard, uh, the Marketing Chief Operating Officer of Providence Hospital, and we have Ms. Royale Clark here, who is the Director of our ER, to give us a presentation.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, yes, my name is Joe Bernard with Providence Health. I had a humbling moment. I'm sitting in the back row there, and I was a, a pilot for over 20 years in the Marine Corps and had great eyesight. I couldn't see that darn slide to save my life, uh, so just waiting to be called on. Uh, but thank you very much, uh, for inviting me and Royale Clark, uh, the woman sitting in the back in red, who is our nursing leader at the Fairfield Freestanding ER. Uh, I was invited by both, uh, Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Taylor, uh, having had a couple of meetings with them, uh, to come and give a presentation, uh, an update, six months, if you will, uh, to both the Fairfield County Council and to the folks, uh, the community of Fairfield County who might be here. Uh, I would be remiss if I ignored, uh, the comments, ma'am, that you made, uh, at the outset. I, I will say that I'm not familiar with the details, but, uh, I look forward to finding out about those, and us being able to follow up with you, meet with you, uh, and, and discuss the circumstances around that particular incident. So, uh, we opened on December 18th, 2018, so just last week, we celebrated six months, if you will, uh, of being in Winsboro and in Fairfield County. Uh, so if I can just provide, uh, some color and some detail around what's been going on there, uh, we're seeing about 850 emergency department-specific patients a month, uh, at Fairfield, uh, which equates to about 28 patients a day. Uh, our projections, uh, in year one was to see a minimum of 22 patients a day, so we are exceeding that. Um, I will say that, uh, our outpatient services have not quite, uh, built the momentum, uh, that we have on the emergency department side of things. So outpatient lab and outpatient imaging, uh, which includes, uh, CT, x-ray, and ultrasound, uh, we're seeing, uh, less than half of the volume, uh, that we anticipated, and quite frankly, uh, less than half of the volume, uh, that Fairfield Memorial Hospital was saying, uh, seeing. Uh, so I would say the principal thing that we're doing is, uh, really trying to connect with the medical community in Fairfield County. Uh, we have what we call in, in Providence Health and in our company's world, a growth and outreach program, so it's a responsibility of a woman who works with me, uh, to lead our growth and outreach effort. It's also my responsibility, and Royale Clarks is our onsite leader here in Fairfield County, uh, to reach out to the physicians, the various clinics, the providers, uh, of healthcare in this community, to educate and inform them, uh, of the services that we have, like outpatient imaging and lab, in addition to the emergency department services. Uh, so my point there is just, please know that we are trying to do that, uh, trying to cast a wide net and encourage, uh, the community, uh, to seek us out if it's appropriate for various outpatient services. Uh, we have a great working relationship with Fairfield County EMS. Uh, I live in Richland County. Uh, you should be proud of, uh, what you have at Fairfield County EMS. They have been great to work with, uh, from my perspective personally, with Mike Tanna, Tanner, Anna Rhodes and the rest of the team there, uh, but our team, uh, speaks very, very highly of them, and, uh, they provide a great service to this community. They have worked, worked really well with us, uh, as far as transferring patients that may come to the Fairfield Freestanding ER, and, and once stabilized, they need a higher level of care, whether or not they're transferred to a Providence Health Hospital, Northeast or Downtown, or if they're transferred, uh, to another hospital in Columbia or the surrounding community. Uh, Fairfield County EMS has done a great job in that regard. We continue to collaborate and train with them, and we also have a private, uh, ambulance transport service, first priority that we use, uh, at both hospitals as well as here at the Freestanding ER, uh, and First Priority also, uh, does an outstanding job. Now, the one thing I would mention too, as far as reaching out to the medical community, we have, uh, at our healthcare system, uh, and throughout our company, our parent company is LifePoint Health, um, what we call physician engagement groups. So roughly once every three to four months, myself as an administrative leader of our Northeast Hospital and responsible for Fairfield County, I meet with about 13 plus or minus one selected physicians that represent various specialties. Some may be employed by Providence Health, some may be independent providers, some in large groups, some in standalone, one-person offices. We try to cast a wide net and have a good variety, and so in Fairfield County, the two physicians that have been involved and very helpful in providing us insight and feedback are, uh, Dr. Gaddy, and, uh, I hope I'm pronouncing his name right, Dr. Schaefer, who works at the John A. Martin Clinic, and is associated, uh, associated, I believe, with, uh, University of South Carolina. Um, so great, uh, feedback and collaboration we get from those two gentlemen. Well, I was asked to touch on a couple of, uh, quick points. Number one, if you see our building, uh, at 321 and 213, uh, yes, we do have what we call a Sheldon space. So it's 6,000 square feet of today, empty space, uh, that's part of the building, uh, and it was built that way initially, uh, we needed to focus on the emergency department. So we have 12,000 square feet with six treatment rooms in the emergency department with the lab and the imaging that I spoke about earlier, and so that was our principal focus, um, at least for year one. Uh, I guess, to be quite candid, uh, we'll see as things, uh, mature and develop, uh, how quickly our timeline is to address the other 6,000 square feet. Those are four 1,500 square foot each, uh, physician office spaces. So candidly, uh, our goal is to both place Providence Health physicians in there, as well as potential community physicians that wanna lease space from us. Uh, and ideally, and I have done this in other markets, uh, in particular in Florida where I used to work, um, where we had some of our specialists that don't provide coverage in a community like, uh, Winsboro and Fairfield County, uh, say an ENT physician as an example, or a urologist, uh, a general surgeon. Ideally, they would be up here in an office space like that, maybe one or two days a week, maybe half a day, maybe a full day. I mean, it's kinda, it runs the gamut, to be quite honest with you, but it really gives some, uh, great opportunity for the local community to seek healthcare in their community without having to travel to Columbia or elsewhere. Uh, so that's our long-term vision, but I can't stand here today and give you a timeline, that would be disingenuous of me. Uh, I would imagine 12 months from now, we're gonna be in a much stronger position, uh, to determine what we're going to do next with those 6,000 square feet. Behavioral health patients, and that was just mentioned, I think, a gentleman, uh, or a person getting promoted to a, a local board, uh, but Mr. Taylor, Mr. Gilbert, myself, uh, we spoke about this last week when we met, uh, and to be quite honest, I didn't have a silver bullet answer for Mr. Taylor asking about behavioral health patients, uh, and services. Uh, we actually struggle with similar things that Fairfield County does, um, where emergency departments have become, uh, in some cases, kind of a, a place of first resort or a place of last resort, uh, for certain behavioral health patients. Uh, and when they come, I'll give you an example, we, we have, uh, sometimes patients that come on, come into our emergency department, and, uh, they can be there weeks and months. Uh, they're stabilized medically, uh, and they are just waiting for an appropriate bed in the right behavioral health setting, uh, in the Midlands or, uh, in the state of South Carolina, and honestly, we canvass the Southeast, so we go outside the state and try and, uh, find other entities, and it's a real challenge. So I have provided to Mr. Taylor, uh, a point of contact that we had, uh, success with, uh, at one place, Adult Protective Services. Uh, we do work with the Department of Social Services and other entities, uh, in Columbia and in the state of South Carolina, but, uh, like Florida, uh, and many other states in the country, there's a significant lack of behavioral health beds, uh, in South Carolina, uh, and it really puts a strain on the healthcare system as a whole. And, uh, the last point, uh, so it was behavioral health, the physician office space at our Fairfield Freestanding ER, and respiratory therapy services. So apparently, this may have, uh, lack of better way of saying it, leaked out into the community that Providence was thinking of doing something different with respect to, uh, respiratory therapy services at the Freestanding ER. True, we were thinking about it. We haven't done anything different. So when we opened the doors, we had 24/7, and today we have 24/7 coverage with respect to respiratory therapy. Uh, and I anticipate that that's what's going to remain in place, uh, but, uh, that was something that was being kicked around of, is it appropriate in a setting like this, what have you? Uh, so, if something changes, I will certainly convey that to Mr. Taylor. Uh, Mr. Gilbert, for those that don't know, is on the Board of Trustees at Providence Health. Uh, he represents, uh, the Fairfield County Council and the Fairfield Community, uh, on the Board at Providence. And so the last thing I would say, um, before I give Royale an opportunity, if there are any clinical-related questions or any questions for us, uh, as a team, if you will, um, we focus on making communities healthier by extending Christ Healing Ministry. So Providence Health is a faith-based organization. We happen to be affiliated with Catholic Healthcare at Providence, and have been since its founding in 1938. We have a mission and ministry that's led by, um, religious, uh, experts, if you will, subject matter experts, uh, that support all the efforts that we're doing, and we have brought that to the Freestanding ER. We have incorporated elements of Catholic Healthcare in the architecture and the design, uh, of the building, uh, and the staff goes through the same orientation and the same exposure of our expectations with respect to extending Christ Healing Ministry in this community. So along with, uh, our mission and our mission and ministry aspect of the operation, we focus on growth, uh, so if there's an opportunity for us to bring in new services, uh, in a community like this, uh, we're certainly going to be, uh, doing our due diligence to see if that makes sense. Uh, operational excellence is another pillar that we're, uh, always rallying around, and that's to be as efficient and effective as possible. We make mistakes, uh, we need to own up to those and take accountability and responsibility for them, uh, and we have to learn from them, uh, and make sure that we continue to improve. And the last thing is high-performing talent. So it's our responsibility, and this is a competitive industry, uh, in the Midlands is a competitive region, uh, with Lexington Medical Center and Prisma Health, uh, and us, um, among others, uh, kind of competing for the same pool of people. Uh, so we need to attract, uh, the right bees with the right honey, uh, and that's what we're trying to do, uh, as far as bringing a high-performing, talented professionals, uh, to both Fairfield County, uh, and to Providence Health, our two hospitals. Uh, so I appreciate, uh, the reception that we have received, uh, from first responders, uh, from the community as a whole. Uh, we look forward to the next six months, and I think I might be coming back here, if not sooner, if I'm asked, uh, to provide some kind of an update, uh, and, uh, if there are any questions for us, uh, I'm here. Uh, I have never, uh, stuck a needle in somebody or taken any blood or anything like that. I'm an administrator and not clinical at all, but that's why I brought my sidekick, uh, Royale, who's a registered nurse, if something comes up that I can't answer.
First off, Mr. Bernard, I'll simplify to you. Uh, but with that being said, uh, the only concern I had was the, the rumors of the possible cutting of the, uh, respiratory therapy, and, and, you know, it's been rumored around, and I, I just wish, I hope that, that is not, that will not happen, because I'd like to keep it as a, an ER. Uh, so, with, with that being said, i- is there anything that we can do as a council or, or as administration that could help not, not for that to happen?
Um, number one, thank you for asking, uh, and mentioning it, but at this point, I would say no. Uh, to be quite candid, um, I'm pretty confident that what we have today is what we're going to maintain. Uh, my one caveat would be, uh, the person that I really need to lean on, uh, and, uh, collaborate with is our Chief Nursing Officer, who happens to be on vacation for the past week plus, so I haven't had the opportunity to dive deeper into it. I have spoken with Royale, I have spoken with several of the nurses, uh, that work at the Freestanding ER, a couple of them live in Fairfield County, at least a couple. Uh, I have spoken with a couple of our respiratory therapists, uh, and right now, nobody has stood up and say, hey, I think it's a great idea to cut respiratory services, uh, at the Freestanding ER.
Mr. Douglas.
Um, when can we expect something on Ms. Workman's, um, problem?
Well, that would be something that I would have to follow up, uh, someone on our team at Providence Health would have to follow up with her on individually, I believe.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and would like to say, um, I'm gonna give you my information, and I would appreciate when you do get some information on that, um, that I could as well be informed, because she is in my area and, and, uh, and it's personal as well, so I would like to know the details and how it's resolved, how that situation resolved.
Thank you. I would, uh, I appreciate that. I would say, uh, and I have to be honest, I'm kind of flying without, or playing without a net here, but my comfort level would be dealing directly with the patient, with the family, if you will. Uh, I can certainly let you know that we have spoken, uh, we have followed up and all that, but any of the details would really have to come from somebody other than us at Providence Health.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure that it is resolved and, thank you so much.
I agree. Uh, my goal would be that that happens, uh, by Friday of this week at the latest.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Bell.
Okay, um, I, I agree with, um, um, with everyone, um, uh, Mr. Doug, Mr. Douglas, and that we need to make sure we, um, look into, um, Ms. Workman, um, situation, because, um, that, that's kinda terrible that happened. Okay, but the other piece is, and I've heard the same thing as Mr. Robertson, is about the, um, the level of care being, being reduced. Okay, and I'm glad you are saying that right now, it looks like that is not the case.
That's correct.
Okay, and the next piece of that is, and I, I've also been hearing that there's been a lack of doctors for patients to see when they come in for the emergency care. How is that treated, or is that so?
No, it's not. Uh, we have 24/7 coverage, uh, by a emergency physician. We have 24/7 coverage by an emergency physician. So we don't have any nurse practitioners or advanced practitioners, what we call mid-level providers in the healthcare industry, providing care. It is a physician. Thank you for mentioning that point, because I glossed over something in my notes. We did make a couple of changes recently with our physician staffing. We partner with a private company who's been very collaborative with us since I started speaking with them in June of last year. Several of the physicians did come over from Fairfield Memorial Hospital. My understanding is there was some concern globally around some issues. We have made some recent changes, I would say, within the last one and three months, and I'm confident that we have the right physicians now providing care in our freestanding ER. And in particular, the gentleman who, I think today, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I will say he's in an interim medical director capacity, Dr. Holliday is his name, an outstanding physician, and the only reason that he's not the permanent medical director as of a couple of weeks ago is he has a different contractual obligation that I think prevents him from kind of taking on formally another responsibility, but functionally, that's what he's doing. And I believe we have addressed appropriately the physician piece. But no, there's always a physician in the building, on duty, providing care at that ER.
Mr. Chair, just one thing, I want to also say, I thank Providence Health for being here, and I commend you, but I'm going to always support you, because I have longevity of history. I'm familiar with other healthcare facilities in the state, but with Providence, I have the longevity of our history, from family, friends, and every, and you stand excellent, and I support that. So I am glad that you're here in Fairfield County, and I would be just encouraging anybody, Providence Health is in the area, you're in good hands. That's, that's just how we see it. So thank you so much, but I commend you highly for your service, your compassion, everything, and that hasn't just begun, it has been from years of Providence Health Association and Care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernard, I'd like to say thank you for accepting our invitation to come and explain and to tell a little bit about the ER and you and Ms. Royale. I look forward to the next visit you have with us and taking care of the situation with Ms. Workman.
Yes.
And her family, but thank you very much for coming and being part of it.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Thank you.
Next, next we have Mr. Everett Hare, our Fairfield County Veterans Affairs Officer, who will be here tonight to give his final report. As we heard earlier, he will be retiring and will be missed.
Madam Clerk, Chair, Council, Mr. Taylor, thank you for inviting me here tonight to do this. It's a little sad, but a little happy all at the same time. I'd like to thank council and the administration for the support that we've gotten over the past three and a half years for our office to grow. We really have moved forward in great leaps in the office, and my report will cover some of the, some of the boundaries and leaps that we've made. I started in April of 2016, and I can tell you right now, I started a good bit due to Ms. Karen Roseberry. She was my first administrative assistant, and she was in the office on the most, on the basis of being alone a lot. So I really thank Ms. Karen for letting me know about the position and how it came to We worked hard to bring our office into the 21st, the 20th, 21st century. Over the past three years, we've digitized and scanned 3,700 and so odd files, more than 75,000 pages of documents that we've done ourself in the office. We are working on file cabinet number five, which is how many file cabinets we've emptied. So this is where we're going. We've had 2,021 office visits, fielded some 2,400 phone calls and 1,400 emails, you know, letters and so forth, just me and my admin assistant, Ms. Peggy Frick, who is in the back of the room. This is what we do. It's a two-person office, and we work steady and hard for our veterans in the county. Right now, to date, we've submitted 1,197 claims to the VA for our veterans. Some of them have been as many as 700 pages in one claim. We've had one claim that was over 300 pages. And to put a claim together, I should have went to law school when I got out of the military, because that's what I'm writing, is legal pleas. And the average claim takes between two and eight hours to complete one claim. So we stay real busy. Right now, our office monitors 140 active claims. We have 140 claims with the VA that we watch, and we represent the veteran to the VA. My office is a unique office, created in 1975 by the governor. This position is an appointed position. The legislative delegation appoints me and points me to the governor, and the governor credentials me. So that being said, my loyalty is to the veteran. I have to be loyal to the veteran. I'm not, I will follow the rules of county, I'll follow the rules of the VA, but my loyalty of the office is to the veteran, you know, what's best for the veteran. So we do, everything that we do with the VA is, is law. Everything that's written is federal law, so it's a pretty big deal. Couple of years ago, when we started, we didn't have a way to get some of our veterans down to the VA hospital. There are still some transportation issues to overcome with the county transportation, about grants and how to maneuver this, but myself, on Tuesdays, I just started taking veterans to the VA, and we've done a total of 106 trips over the past three years, taking as many as four and five at a time. So we stay busy. We have about 12 vets in the county from one end to the other that don't have transportation. So if they have Medicaid, they can get to the VA, but if they don't have Medicaid, then Medicare won't take care of it. So there's some grant issues, and we've been going for a couple of years trying to figure out how to adjust that. I do home visits and outreach visits, and to date, I've made over 223 of those, just going to our vets in the county and talking to them. We work with Harvest Hope. We have some vets that are in need. So I work with Harvest Hope every year, and to date, we've gotten 140 holiday meal boxes and supplement boxes that I send out, and I personally deliver, or I make points of getting help to get them delivered. My admin assistant corrected me for our newsletter. Our newsletter started October of 2017 and not March of 18, but we started October 2017, at least producing an electronic newsletter to get out to our veterans. We build an electronic database, and we send it out to our veterans on email, and if veterans let us know that they want it by mail, we'll mail it to them also. So we try to put that out, and that's how we get a lot of information and notices to our veterans in the, in the areas of the county, because we represent all there. On a sad note, the VA has and still is to date, averaged 20 suicides a day by veterans. And since I've been in office, I'm sad to say I've lost three. I've been able to help prevent two, but I've lost three, and that, it hurts. You know, when you work with a veteran and you try to get what he needs and get him there, and you find out that he's no longer with us and he's done it to himself or herself, it hurts. So that's a, that's a big bang. It really does. Putting some of the good stuff. The VA, and if council looks at your report, the last two pages of the report I provided, the VA provides what they call a GDX report on every county and every state of the United States, and they talk about what comes and how the VA impacts the county. And for this biggest punch that I will look at, right now, for as of 2016, the VA had us as 1,665 veterans, and this is identified veterans living in the county, receiving $19 million plus of goods and services. Compensation in cash, pension, cash dollars, the county veterans have received in 2016, $10,900,000 in the county. That's dollars coming into our county. In 2018, we bumped it up to 19.4 million, 11.2, and this was a total increase, just to cut to the chase, a total increase for our office in the past three years of $291,000 more coming back into the county. And these are only vets that are listed in the county's zip codes. I have vets that live in Newbury and Richland and Lancaster and Chester, so I have vets that are all over, that they come to our office, because it might be closer to get to us than it is to get to Richland County's office. We get, we get a lot of vets from outside also. Our door's always open. We don't turn anybody away. A vet's there, we need them, we'll help them. At this time, I have a couple members of, I call it Veterans Council, and I have two of them with me tonight. Mr. John Kelly, if you please stand up, and Mr. Cliff Hendricks, if you please stand up. Mr. Cliff, and you've already heard from him, he's got the western side of the county. He handles Jenkinsville, all through that area. He's a good point of contact for me. He brings vets to me when I find out there's vets that need something. If I can go find them, I got certain churches in the area that have helped me, and they bring in goods and services, and I deliver clothes and toothpaste and soap, doesn't matter, I take it to them. Cliff, thank you for what you do. Thank you for taking care of the vet. John Kelly, you can see by his shirt, Vietnam Combat Purple Heart. He does the other side of the county, and I'm going to tell you what, he spends more out of his pocket than I could ever imagine. He shows his gratefulness to his community, and whenever I need something or I need to know about somebody, he's got a finger on them, and he can get me word. So John, thank you for what you do. Thank you. They've done a lot for me, and they've done a lot for this office, and I do appreciate, and again, thank you for your support, really do. I hope the next one is good. The delegation has the names. I have four applications. I have personally vetted two, that I would be happy with either one of those two, and I know them, and I could, I could be, they could be my VSO. So I'm just waiting on the delegation now to see if they can catch up. Here's we are.
Any questions, comments from council?
Mr. Hare, I just want to say thank you for your dedication to Fairfield County and all your staff for helping out and doing a great job with Fairfield County.
Mr. Bill.
Mr. Hare, you know, just want to say thank you for all the work you've done. Had many occasions to talk with you. I tell you what, you've done a good job, and the people that you work with, you know, Mr. Hendricks and I were just talking a few minutes ago, and I tell you what, you have done a really, really good job, and just thank you for your service, and just, and I hope you have a really good retirement.
And I too would like to say thank you so much, and you're exactly right, Mr. Hendricks is definitely an excellent person to work with, and thank you so much for the service, for the team that you've put together here to help our veterans, because they are just invaluable. So thank you so much. Enjoy your retirement.
This is almost 19 years. I was a paramedic with the county for 17 years.
All right. Oh, dude.
And I also want to thank Mr. Kelly too for all the work he do.
Yes, by all means.
Well, today is a good occasion and yet a sad one. I can call him Rick, because I've been knowing him just about all those 19 years, I think. He's been a public servant his whole life. He was in the Navy, came out of the Navy, paramedics, and then he went on to be a VSO, am I correct? So he's been a public servant his whole life. It takes a special person to do that, you know, and out of those 1,000, I guarantee I was at least 300 of those visits. Guaranteed, so we've got a long-lasting relationship. I hope you enjoy your retirement, and I got your number, so I'll be aggravating you.
Yes, sir. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Next up, I'm going to ask Ms. Diana Robinson from the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act program to come and give us a presentation. She's got some good news on M. Lily. As everybody's aware, M. Lily is moving into the old Mack truck building. They are starting to hold job fairs, small job fairs, but we do want to make sure that all of our citizens are aware that these jobs are going to come open, because we want, of course, our citizens first in line to get these jobs. Ms. Robinson.
Good afternoon to the Chair, Board Members, and Citizens of Fairfield County. I know that the important thing is bringing jobs. I know that the economy has been hard, especially for Fairfield County, so with the company of M. Lily coming in, we see that there's been a potential growth. Last Friday, they had a little hiring event that they did, where the owners actually did, brought in some people that were hired on through remedy staffing, and they're hiring on their permanent staff, which is the QC operators, the supervisors, and things like that. The production side is not yet kicking off just now, but they still, they are taking applications. We have applications at the WIWA office, which is in the J.B. Floyd Building, which is where the Veterans Affairs Office is at. I have the applications there. If any citizen needs assistance with their resumes, I can most certainly help them with that. We have our resource room in there, which is our SC Works Office, which will be able to assist you with resumes and kind of tailoring your, your resume to what you're wanting to do. They're doing production, again, they're doing, you know, different operations like that, and they are going to have a job fair in the near future. They haven't set that date yet, but as soon as that comes out, I do post that on our Facebook page, which is at Fairfield WIWA. And I'm also available, you know, anytime anyone needs anything. My direct number is 803-815-1514, and I'm available to any citizen and any questions they may have, not necessarily about M. Lily, but anything about any jobs or anything they need with the WIWA.
You mentioned Facebook advertisement. You don't advertise any other way besides Facebook?
We're not allowed. We're not allowed to, like, advertise to the newspaper or anything like that, anything that is.
How can you get the knowledge out to the people, let them know that there's going to be a job fair?
Oh, well, we post that out there, and then we send that information out to other local offices, like the DSS office has that information. And we also go out there ourselves, and I go drop off stuff at barber shops or at the churches and things like that that I can do, but we can't ourselves, the WIWA cannot post jobs directly with a job fair.
Well, when you find out when you're going to have it, would you let Mr. Taylor know so we could get an advertisement in the paper about it?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. You can do that.
That was going to be my question too. Could we make sure we get it on the county website at least?
Yes, we do. We will, we'll share that on the county website through our SC Midlands page. We also share it through the Chamber of Commerce and any other resources like that, but again, we can't publish it ourselves. It has to be done through another entity. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from council?
Thank you.
And the last thing I have, just want to let council and the public know that on June 25th, this Tuesday, First and Main, who is doing the redevelopment of the Mount Zion, will be holding a community meeting to take input on the history and education displays that they will have to do to meet some of their funding requirements. And that will be held at the Christ Central Building, which is right next to the county library or the county museum.
Mr. Taylor, you and I have already talked about this a little bit. Are we having another meeting besides this one that we're going to have at Christ Central Church?
Of course, we can have more. This is the one that was initiated by First and Main, but if you want to have one specifically for the county to sponsor, obviously, we could do that too.
I think we need to do something. Okay, that's just my opinion, okay? I think we need to do something so most, most citizens can be aware of it and try to understand what we're going to put in there, because I think there's going to have to be some, something in there that talks about our history.
Of course.
Okay, so let's make sure we do something that can include more people.
Okay. Glad to set that up.
Anything else from council? If you finish, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, I'm finished, I'm sorry.
Now down to our clerk to council's report, Ms. Davis.
Just a reminder, we have our next intergovernmental meeting. This will be hosted by Fairfield County Council. It's this Wednesday at 6:00, and it will be held at the Midlands Tech Fairfield Campus.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Now down to our second public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
We have three speakers. First, Mr. Kamaiy Marsharia, speaking on zoning.
Mr. Chair, council members, Mr. Taylor, Madam Clerk, hottest working woman in Fairfield County. I had some concerns about the zoning when I was inquiring about the Lad Road Recreation Project. So I went to the zoning to get copies of Project. So, I went to the zoning to get copies of the drawings that they've had, and I filled out a Freedom of Information, information to them. And the person told me, once they found the copies that I wanted, I had to pay $5 per copy. It was just four copies. That was $20 I had to pay. Now, the policy, to my understanding, when you file under Freedom of Information Act, you ought to forward that to the person electronically. It costs you nothing. How many people know that you can ask for that and get it electronically and pay nothing? I was asked to pay $20 for four copies of 11 by 7, this here, right here. So, I came to Mr. Taylor to talk to him about it. And when they did forward it to me, this is what they forwarded to me, the four copies that's in here. I took their copies and went to Kinko's and asked for 16 copies, because that's what the county wanted. And the 16 copies, if I were to purchase it from the Fairfield County, would have been $80. Through Kinko with 16 copies, and here's the receipt, $7.56 for 16 copies for 11 by 17. How's the county gonna rip the public off for $80 and $5 a copy? My concern is, when did these kind of fees go up that the citizen know nothing about? How come the citizen don't know that they can file for Freedom of Information and receive these documents electronically? We are asking for the rural area, the VC Summer Nooka Power Plant gives $33 million a year to the county within three years. That's a proximity of $100 million. And when the rural communities ask for something, we don't have it in the budget and you can't do it. How is it then that, the question is, when did these fees go up? Did the county initiate this? Was there a committee that initiated these fees? How did these fees come about? I would like to have the documentation to that. I would further go on to say, out of all the agencies that we have within this county, under the offices of this county government, can we have the information?
I'm sorry.
Can I have one more minute, please?
I'll allow it.
You will, thank you. We'd like to have the information respectively of 2016, 2017, 2018, of how much money did the taxpayers have to pay to get this service from the county? How much money did the county make off the taxpayers? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on the Lads Project.
Good evening again, Chairman Robinson and other council members. Jackie Workman, District 4. It is now my understanding that the county administrator has a copy of the plaque that was in question for the last road project and the proposed architectural drawings of what to be placed on that land. The county has spent thousands and thousands of dollars on this project in the past. Now, all of a sudden, the county has no awareness of this project. The taxpayers need to hold the county accountable for the thousands and thousands of dollars spent on this project without finalizing it. Under an orally FOIA request, the taxpayers is requesting an itemized account of those expenditures in a timely fashion. I contacted the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission myself, but you're not gonna tell me it's known and I don't check it, FART, requesting the boundaries of the 8.12 acres of land, and they did forward it to me. Now that you have the plaque, proposed architectural drawings, and a copy of the boundaries from FART, the community is requesting that you continue to work on this project until completed. The community knows that the initial work on this land can be done by the county through in-kind services, such as a necessary landscaping, seesaws, merry-go-round, swings for shelters with benches, circle flower lighted garden with benches, baseball field with dugouts, concession building and benches, bathrooms, water fountain, walking trail with benches, throughout indicated in the original plan. Mr. Taylor did bring to my attention that the original plan, the lease was almost up, which is definitely true, the original plan. The original plan was signed December 201989, and it was leased for 30 years, which is 2019. Therefore, it makes me think that's why the grass will stop being cut. But, he didn't know about the next lease, the second lease that was signed by South Carolina Electric and Gas. It was October 27, 2007, and this time, it's leased for 50 years, so I'll be dead and gone when that lease is up. And we would like the same kind of resources that was used to build the farmer's market. And at 5 o'clock, I think roughly 5, Ms. Karen called me and said that she had the information that I had requested under FOI, and I just want to thank her that I'm finally getting the information that I formally requested. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have the copy for you, Mr. Taylor, but I want it back.
I'd like to see it also.
And here's the plaque, I mean, the boundaries. I know I'm through. The boundaries for FART. And here's the, I'm gonna give you a copy of the original, and here's the secondary, and I want both of them back.
Thank you.
All right. And you provide one for Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on feedback.
Randy Bright, District 1, Fairfield County, Ridgeway. I was impressed tonight, particularly of your interest in listening to the feedback from the group, the Sievels and others, talking about the incinerator. And it's flexibility and proactiveness that really shows strong leadership from everyone on this council. And you all should be proud of being able to bend a little bit, be flexible, to listen to people, to resolve and to prevent problems. Good job with there, and obviously, you've got more work to do in that area. Now, one other, and one other thing I would like to bring up in that same proactive mode, is we've seen that where rumors, and we all know that we hear a lot of rumors in Fairfield County, and rumors can be very damaging. And if Mr. Bernard had not come, it could have impacted our healthcare situation, of false information being spread, for whatever reason. And that proactiveness and eliminating the damage that can be done by rumors, brings to mind that we might need to follow something that counties, municipalities, and organizations around the United States have organized and implemented a citizens' review board for their police activities. And what that does is gives people a sounding board, instead of a genuine sounding board, instead of a rumor mill, to follow up the information on our policing activities. Now, I know of no problems. In fact, I think the Sheriff's Department probably does the best job in the state of outreach to the community. But enough is never done in that, in that aspect. And I think if we had a citizens' review board that could be a sounding board, a fair and reasonable board, it would prevent problems from happening. It would prevent rumors from destroying reputations. It would prevent county divisiveness if people had a place to go, that they felt safe in reporting any issues. And it might be compliments. I look at it as, as if, to me, if I was a police officer, I would embrace the body camera. It protects me, and it protects the citizens. And so would a citizens' review board. It's something to look at. It may prevent problems. And I think that it not only helps the citizens, it helps the community, and it gives trust. It builds, helps build even more trust with our local sheriff's authorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
Thank you. That concludes segment two.
Now, down to our county council. Time any council member would like to recognize, Mr. Douglas.
I just want to state that the chairman thought enough of me to give me a seat on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. I guess because I have a friend that they don't like, I've never been invited to a board meeting. In fact, as I talked to one of the board members, and they said they haven't made any decisions, it's all handled by someone else. But because I don't think I'll be able to work with these people, I'd ask the chairman to please appoint someone else to be on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Mr. Bill?
One of the things, I want to, Mr. Taylor, I want to thank you for having scheduled a meeting at the, at the site for the incinerator. I wanted to get that done, and because I thought it was very important to do. And then, for your willingness to go ahead and try to get the, I guess, the meeting in Richland County, so I want to thank you for doing that. The next thing is, is I don't, I guess I don't understand why Kamaiu Marcheria had to pay so much money. Is that, is that something?
It was brought to my attention that we have a conflict as far as in our own code as what you should charge. And I told staff, until we could review this conflict and resolve it, charge the lower rate, the lowest rate that's in our code. I don't think we should charge $5, but that is in one of our planning documents that we should charge that much. But I did tell staff, I said, until we resolve this, let's go with the lower fee.
Okay, and thank you.
We didn't send orders.
But there's a conflict, and again, to resolve it and get the people the benefit of the doubt, I would go with the lower fee.
Okay, and thank you. And the next thing is, I guess about three weeks ago, they was having the senior vouchers for the farmer's market. I met with Ms. Connor from the council on aging and asked her to have a event in Ridgway. So, we were able to get the Ridgway Fire Department. And today, that, it was held from 12:30 to 2:30. And the turnout was awesome. From 12:30 to 2:30, there were people in line, okay? And we was able to take names as of 2:30, but as of 2:30, they couldn't bring nobody else in. But they were busy for the entire time. And again, and she says thus far, it has been the biggest turnout that we've had for the vouchers. But again, I want to thank Ms. Connor, although she's not here tonight, for being able to work with us and try to provide services that wasn't originally offered. So, I want to thank her for her flexibility and for doing this for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, go on.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you. I want to say, just briefly, and to Ms. Workman, thank you so much for your due diligence in the Lads Project and following that up and giving the details. There is nothing that one of us can do by ourselves, but if we all work together and do a good part, we can accomplish much. So, I want to thank you for that, and if there's anything I can do to support that, to have it move forward, to help bring it to fruition, please feel free to let me know. But I want to thank you so much for your keeping on top of that. And I want to thank Mr. Taylor for also working with her. I appreciate that, and I hope that whatever the project comes out to be, that it will be satisfactory for the citizens of the west side. So, thank you so much. Also, in addition to that, I mentioned that I did call the State DOT about Greenbrier Mossedale Road, and I want to let you know they did respond back to me quickly, and I appreciate that so much. That project, and I have a project number, is up to be taken care of. They're going to do paving, they're going to do patching. They won't do a total surfacing at this time, but it will come up later. But that project is on board in works. I just want to let you know. They also sent me a survey, so I will go out when the project is completed. I'll go out while they're doing it, and when this is completed, and I will fill out the survey and send it back in saying that it is satisfactory. I'll speak with some of the people on that, in that area to find out, you know, what they think about it before I send it back in. But just wanted to let you know that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Paul?
I just want to say that there was a lot of great comments concerning the area of Old Airport Road and the effects it will have on the surrounding residents. Thank you for being involved and coming to the meeting to give us your concerns.
Any other council member?
I do have something else for Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor, if you can answer these questions now, that'd be great, but if you can't, then get back with me at a later time. There's a lot in the public about the magistrate situation we have been put in, and a lot of people are asking me questions because they know the county controls the budget. I'd like to ask you a few questions. Mr. Taylor, do we have any idea what this magistrate situation is going to cost us?
We are trying to understand that. I am meeting with the Senator on Wednesday to further discuss. He thinks he has some options and can help us. We were looking at the possibility of having to hire interim or temporary magistrates to cover the courts and the bond hearings until the others could be seated, because I think it takes six to nine months, from what I understand, through court administration, for someone coming on who is a non-attorney to go through training before they can hear cases. So, we did have concern. Again, I am meeting with the Senator to hear what kind of solutions he has, because he thinks he can help us in that respect on Wednesday.
Okay. My other two questions might be, you know, answered, but how is it determined how the new magistrate is going to be paid?
We have talked with court administration. They are set guidelines on salaries for temporary and full-time and chief magistrates, and we are following the guidelines of court administration.
Has the Senator let us know what he wants them to be paid?
He has not been involved in that process. Again, I'm gonna talk to him Wednesday, but he has essentially deferred that to us to follow court administration guidelines.
Okay. And my last question, do you know when the pay for the new magistrate will start? And that might be on Wednesday as well. I was told that they may, they may receive retroactive pay.
Again, we're following court administration guidelines as closely as we can on this. Once they're sworn in, once they are, well, are appointed, they start getting paid.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. I'll just...
I guess I got a follow-up question to make sure I understand. Is that any different than normally it's happened?
No, that's the way it's always done.
Any further questions from council? On another lighter note, our 8 and under boys did win state championship yesterday, so that's, that's a plus. And I want to say the 12 and, 12 and up also won state championship. So, we have, Recreation is doing pretty good for now. So, just, I think we'll probably try to get them on the agenda for next council, so we can honor them and for their hard works and hard practices. So, that's all I got, if council has anything else, so.
That's all moved to adjourn.
It's been moved in proper seconds to adjourn. All those in favor? Any opposed? We adjourn.